Good evening and welcome to the Town of Act and Selectments Meeting for July 16, 2015. First item on the agenda, salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Start with the agenda or do we want to go this old business?
I thought that you had put the first couple of things on there. The proof of the agenda of the department heads, if you want them at the top. This is new, remember, and without the communication during the week, I kind of need guidance from the board as to how you want this to look come Thursday.
I'm okay with the approval of the agenda and the approval of the minutes and then go into the department heads so that they don't have to stay for the whole meeting if they don't want to. Anybody else? Sounds good to me. You all right?
It was just a snap there.
About three.
It's a good thing we got Peter here.
Too much sleep.
Okay, so.
So with that said, with the board having brought everything before us at 6:00, how or who will the agenda be set?
You would call me before and we'd talk about the items that you had and put them on the agenda, but now we're going to do the discussion that we do out back to during this time, so I guess I'm okay with you setting the agenda because you know what's most important that has to come before us.
It's a good idea, but probably ought to have something before we get here so we know what we're talking about, if it's possible to get it the night before.
Do you want to set a deadline for items to be on your agenda so that you can review it in advance?
I think that would be a smart way to do it, yeah.
What are you going to do, just email it?
If that's your preference.
Yeah, that's fine.
So when would the set deadline be?
Twenty-four hours or something.
Midday Wednesday. Does that give you enough time to prep it for, say by noon time, the Wednesday prior to our meeting?
And.
Noon time.
Okay, and then anything that comes in after that time, you can just let us know at that meeting, but we'll at least have some way to start.
So for example, the Pennies came in about three minutes before the meeting started. Is that, like, giving me direction that the noon time Wednesday is not a deadline to be on the agenda, that I could still add them if they came, because at that point would I already printed, or would I be putting them on the next week?
I'm okay with adding things like that on after the 12th deadline on Wednesday.
Yeah, I'd say if it was an emergency thing, I mean, that's, you know, that's something that, I won't say it's an emergency, but it's something that definitely shouldn't wait a week, so.
So will you use discretion?
Yes.
Move it up to you. If they're going to wait a week, put it on the next one. Agree?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, so we'll set the agenda by any time Wednesday before, with the exception of anything that we consider an emergency coming in, we can add that by the evening. Is the rest of the agenda how you want it set up in regards to the department heads and committee chairs, you said you were looking to have them first?
You want to be first? Yeah?
So we'll continue with that outline, that works for you?
Looks good.
Okay, so motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Seconded.
All in favor? Approval of the minutes to the last meeting. Thank you for sending those.
So is that just going to be a, okay, way of handling that as well, just email the minutes and you'll review them in advance if you have concerns, you'll let me know with you.
We're backed by email.
Okay. Motion on the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Seconded.
All in favor? Okay, department heads, do you have any preference on who we need to work with tonight or?
My list for the board, I think, includes all three or four of the, actually, and Mr. Neal, involves pretty much everybody in this room, so I would think that based on time efforts, you know, I recommend that we start with the code enforcement officer.
Okay.
Good evening.
You want to start old business or new business?
Let's go with old business.
Did you guys have any questions with the packet I gave you last week?
I don't. No, I think it looked pretty good.
No, I didn't get into the stats for June, but as of June 1st, we had 222 open permits. That didn't include, those were just building permits, that didn't include the electrical, the mechanical, plumbing, septic, shoreline, stormwater, those would all be addition on to it. Currently, there's 27 violations we have open that we're working, 102 shoreline zoning permits. June was 125 inspections, three training events. Every Saturday, we have worked also. So just kind of getting clarification with the deputy, if you guys wanted me to absorb those hours and use it, which kind of was the board's intention prior to, you guys were reluctant to bring on a second person a couple of years ago when we looked at it, and I think it is going to be difficult to find an individual certified that's looking for just a few hours.
How many hours did we plan for that? What was it?
Ten hours.
What was it, $12,000 or $10,000?
I think it's 13 now, 13 or 14.
Okay. So your preference is to have more hours for you than to have an assistant then?
My preference would be to have an assistant, but I don't think I'm going to have a trained individual that's looking for the hours. I see a lot of towns, when they do train an individual, we can send them to train and we can get them certified, and we're just going to lose them within a year or so. The gentleman we had went to Kennybunk. There's no way we're going to compete with those individuals. Once we certify them, we're going to lose them.
Same thing that happens when you get certified by the state.
Same thing, once we certify a town clerk, they're worth their weight in gold.
All right, the agreement expires, what, on the 19th?
Yeah, I think so.
So what are you proposing now? That we take the money from the deputy and increase your hours?
Correct. Also looking at the job description, looking at if you wanted me to change the description, like a lot of towns are calling it Director of Planning and Code Enforcement, which would, that allow me to draft ordinances, work with the planning board as we've been doing, it just was never in the job description. Originally, when I first started, I sat in the audience with the planning board and over time, came to the table with them and helped them with the ordinance reviews, drafting ordinances, with their best possible locations, the site work, and give them guidance. If you guys want, I can stay as code enforcement officer and just ask, you know, work with them as needed.
Have you talked to the planning board, what is their preference?
Lightly with the new chair, I've talked about that, they're looking for as much guidance as possible. We've got $4,000 in that planning board line that we really don't use that much because our office does most of the work. Occasionally, we'll have something, we send a Southern Maine Regional, but usually, the applicant's going to pay for that. It would only be if we need to call them because we want our ordinance work to fix or something like that.
So if somebody comes before the planning board and needs to go outside, they have to pay the fees for that, the town doesn't pay for the fees?
Correct, yeah, we have a subdivision currently on Goose Pond Road, and they know to go to Southern Maine Regional as the process is going, bring them the full set of documents and then get it approved through those guys too, and then they pay the bill on that.
And do they build the town or do they build the individual?
It's gone both ways before, depends on the scope of the project. Occasionally, if it's a large project, we'll start an escrow account for them and then we'll pay those out. If we've got multiple people, if we're getting lawyers, interpretations and things like that, we'll take the money in escrow and go from there.
And back to the job description, back in 93, it was one fairly well typed page. 99, it's almost two pages. Now we're up to like three if we do the.
A lot of the stuff in there could be crossed out. We stole a lot of the verbiage from Lyman and Rangeley and China. As we keep seeing the help wanted signs go up, I'll grab the job description and say, that's some good terminology, and it's what we're doing, and put it in there. So some of the stuff may be redundant, we could pull some of the stuff out. I think Mr. Neal was the one that made the last one, which at the time was cutting edge.
Yeah, the last job description?
Yeah.
The 99 version?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can tell by some of the font, the original one was in type.
Yes. Yeah. I like the idea of the Director of Planning and Coding and Code Enforcement, because I mean, it's more of a function of what you do.
Yeah, as the applicants come into us, we talk, we work out their plans and make sure the application is more complete before they go into the planning board and, or if it's got to go through zoning board first and planning board, and it just help them as much as practical.
Yeah.
Without having our writing on the stuff. Don't help them too much.
Yeah, it, I won't say streamlines it, but it makes sure that everything is in a row and.
Dealing with the same individual and helping them. That way, the planning board's not looking at an application that's incomplete and they kick them out and we come back and do it all over again.
Yeah, that's just a waste of time, basically.
So if we were to move the money from the assistant and the money from the planning board and give you the new title, how many hours would that cover for you to work now for the rest of this year?
I think we were between 32 and 35.
But wasn't that, that's with more money than what we have in the budget though?
I think your 32 is really close, but as it's been the last few weeks, last week was over 50, this week's going to be over 50 as well. If somebody's paid $2,000 or $3,000 for a permit and needs an inspection today and my time's up for the week, I still got to go out and do the inspection tomorrow because they need to keep working, to keep the machinery going so they can make payroll and all that stuff, so going over a few hours here and there, I don't think it's enough that we got to keep comp time and I take the time another week off and this. If it needs to be work, it needs to be worked. So I'm comfortable, as it's been always called, salary, and when I was first hired, it was, you do what you need to do to get the week done, and that was for 10 hours a week, so.
My concern is we didn't go through this process from February on, and we have the money in the budget to move from the assistant and from the code enforcement, but to go over and to go over budget before we even commit taxes this year is where I have an issue. I have no problem, we're going to have to have an emergency town meeting anyways. I have no problem if you want to, just we'll do what we can do now with what's within the budget.
Yeah.
And then you make a proposal that we can go to the warrant of finance before we go to this emergency town meeting, and then we put it on the floor and let people see that we're going to change it and then we're going to increase your salary or your hours so that your pay is going up, and then we can take it out of the undesignated fund for this year and then next year it goes into the budget. But I do have a concern with going beyond what's been, already been approved since we're just coming out of that situation. So that's my only concern with where this has gone. So if that would work and then you're willing to put forward a proposal that we can run before the warrant of finance and have at that special town meeting to decide whether we're going to go beyond that figure, then I would be willing to vote along with Ed and Bill. I just want to make sure that it's out there and, because we just finished the whole process, we didn't get it as a budget, it didn't go to warrant of finance, we didn't make a recommendation and then it was done afterwards, but if we catch up with it now and do it in front of everybody, then I would have no problem with it.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good.
Okay. So if you're willing to do that and then we'll adjust on the 19th, we'll adjust the hours based on the money that's in the budget until we have the emergency town meeting, which I think we're probably going to be talking about tonight anyways, correct? Yeah, so we'll know tonight when that's going to happen. And it seems like with what you've given us so far, you're pretty much set to present to warrant of finance already, so.
Right, right. We'll just know the data between what we have and what we need, and I don't think it's that much.
No, I don't think it's going to be an awful lot of.
I don't think so either.
No.
Ken, I need to ask a question for clarification for the treasurer. So you're talking about the money that was just in code enforcement or are you talking about moving, we're going to, you're going to the special town meeting after we move the deputy and after we move the planning?
Correct.
So that's, so you're giving permission to move, it was 13,000 in the deputy, 4,000 in the planning, so we're moving 17,000.
Right.
The continued salary that you guys discussed last week, put it at 19,000 and change. So he's only going to be going to warrant of finance and special town meeting for the difference of the 19, 3, and the 17, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah.
So he's continuing on the same salary as per the temporary agreement?
Yeah, so we're really only talking.
Isn't the temporary agreement including over and above that 13 and that 4?
The temporary agreement.
Added more than what was in those two, in those two items.
At the end of the 52 hours, at the end of the 52 weeks, you would be $2,000 short at the end of the year.
Right, yeah. So we're looking for that difference, but in the meantime, it would have to be cut down to match what's in there now until we get approval from the town.
Well, you could use what's in there now up until the point where it's gone, because it's going to be money used in this fiscal year. So, I mean, if they don't pass it, then we'll have to adjust it by a couple thousand bucks. If not, then, you know, if they do pass it, then we're all set.
I kind of agree with that.
So a motion to continue paying them as is until we get to the town meeting and then determine what the pay will be after that, or the hours will be after that?
Are you happy with this arrangement and the title change and so forth, Ken?
Yeah, the hours we set before were 35 hours.
32, 35 range, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And like I said, it's been a straight 40 to 50 the last five or six weeks, but winter will come and I'll at least be able to use vacation time out of it then too.
You'll be back down to a comfortable 32 to 35.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So one more time for the record, can you clarify what exactly you're approving tonight?
We need a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we, let's see, we had Ken at 30, I think it was 35 hours.
35.
Yeah, 30, we put Ken at 35 hours. We utilize the 13,000 from the deputy's line and I don't think the, yeah, the 4,000, I don't think the planning board would.
It was the planning line, so.
Yeah, so you can do that, so take the 4,000 from the planning line, so it's a total of 17,000. Use that to offset the difference, or, you know, to bring him up to the 35 hours, and then at town meeting, the special town meeting, we'll go for the approval of the additional funds.
Of the difference between the two?
The difference between the two. What is actual hours would, hours in dollar would be at 35 hours versus what we have in the fund right now.
Right, you need $19,351.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll need roughly $2,300.
Correct.
Second it?
Second.
On the paper?
New business?
Yep.
The fee schedule, we just adopted this within the year, it's working pretty good. The only thing I'd like to change, we've had a policy for a deposit of 25 percent, but sometimes after we do all the work, people never come back. So I'd like to add that into the official fee schedule.
A non-refundable, we didn't have that in there before?
No, we've had it as a policy.
You just told them that they had to give you 25 percent, but we never had that in writing.
Right, we've had it on the permit itself, we do a little bit of calculations and stuff.
Yeah.
Because a lot of times, sometimes we're involved with the town's attorneys and things like that, and once they get the no answer, we get 25 bucks out of them and that's it. A lot of times, we'll have 5, 6, $700 into it and it doesn't go anywhere else.
Average of, say, just a single house?
With the septics and growth permits and stuff, maybe 300, 400 bucks.
Okay.
This would be the official one, if you guys wanted to.
I'll sign it.
That's a good idea.
So are we putting that under new business or are we signing as department heads present?
Yeah, why don't we put it under new business? So that be B?
No, B is the Pennies.
Okay, is, Hennings?
Hennings.
Penny.
P-E-N-N-I-S-T.
Okay, and then C would be code?
Are you adopting this job description this evening?
On the fees? Well, we'll.
I'd like to look and cross out any redundant stuff. One sentence makes more than others and.
So you want to wait till next week for us to sign it?
If you guys want to take a look at it and see there's something you don't like or a word or two you want to change, and then we can change it next week.
Okay, so we don't need to put it on new business and we'll put it on new business next week?
Last thing I had was a fee waiver. We had a home that was burnt on 234 Sanborn Road, it was a mobile home, and they've been in the process of construction, working with their insurance company. We usually try to get a letter from the insurance company that says fees aren't covered. The letter we got from the insurance company this time is, we've given you all your money and you're not getting any more.
Where is this?
234 Sanborn Road.
Oh, okay.
So it was a small house and now it's a colonial with a garage and stuff, so there was insurance money given in this case. The fees were $968. I would recommend at least half waiver if that seems good. Usually, we'll waive all if there's no insurance or the insurance company says, you're definitely not covered for that. It's all on how their policies are written. Sometimes they have code upgrades in their policies and permits and temporary housing, and sometimes you're lucky to get your house and what was inside of it covered, so.
Do we want to vote on that now?
Sure.
Somebody want?
So I guess that's where I'm confused. We just put the fee schedule under new business, so are we going to, am I going to be putting everything under new business as the department heads present it, or are we picking and choosing, or are we going to, I mean, I just need some sort of direction.
Good point. So that would be C and it would be.
That would be D. The Pennies, the scheduled fees that were changed.
We're going to take, the scheduled fees, we're going to put on next week.
No, that was, that was a job description.
Or in it.
Fees we're all set with, I think, right?
Oh, okay, you ready to go on these side, okay, that's not, oh, was it the job description you wanted to read?
That's one you guys designed, the original that was up there.
Cool.
And if you could get the signed one back and then we'll post that on the website.
Job description and then fees. Okay.
For Mr. Paul, is that the last thing you have?
That is the last thing, but I don't think we voted on it, yeah.
We're not voting on anything under new business, is what I'm understanding.
Right.
Just don't correct me. While Mr. Paul is here, because I want him to be part of this conversation, one of the things as office manager that I have on my list to talk to about is the planning board and Mr. Vannell. So the last week or so, a couple of weeks, we had a conversation with Bob Smith, and I know that some of you have had conversations with Mr. Vannell. The planning board and Mr. Vannell are looking for clear guidance as to what his role is, what his role legally can be, whether he can make decisions, whether he can speak, what exactly to do, and there are planning board that are wondering, is this our right training to be able to do this? So I know that Chip is looking for some clarification, and I was hoping that Ken could hear that conversation of your decision.
Well, I had mentioned that I thought, because two people were put on the board, sworn in, and then an election took place, that in order for Chip to stay involved with it, that you could be the liaison for the selectmen and then just come in the Thursdays after that planning board meeting and fill us in on what we need to know from the planning board until such time that you're not able to do that anymore. We can't make you a member of the board because there's an ordinance, but if I remember correctly, you don't vote much anyway, because you were chair all those years, but does that work for you?
Yeah, that'd be great. Would I get the opportunity to talk during discussions?
As long as, as long as the chair has no problem. I mean, if the selectmen were there, we would be able to talk, so I don't see any reason why you wouldn't. You're representing us and filling us in on what happens and, you know, asking us where we want to go with it after you, because we want to take advantage of your knowledge. Would you have 28 years on that board?
Just about.
Yeah, so, and especially with a couple items coming up, we've got one coming up next week with our attorney coming in and everything, so we want to hear what's happening with the planning board, you know, as soon as possible, so if that works for you, I don't know. You guys agree?
I do.
Yeah, I'd like to have a little chat with Chip. Can you come up to the podium for a minute? Would you mind? I just want to get this out and clear the air with everything that's happened over the last couple of weeks, and that is, you and I had a conversation.
Right.
And I don't know whether I misunderstood you or how it went. I mean, I talked to you on the phone, you were in Florida. We had talked about as a board here, the openings that we had coming up on the board and some of the thoughts, we had another member that wanted to go on the board. So I gave you a phone call, Ted was on vacation, and we had a conversation about you staying on the board, you getting off the board. I mean, you know, we all know you're going to, you're going to be going to Florida in a few months, you know, three or three or four months. So when we talked, the conversation was, you know, with that being said, is it, is it good to have you stay on the board? Of course, it is, your knowledge is unsurpassed, I mean, that's, that's, that's great. You know, that was part of our conversation and, you know, I thought the way we left it that you were okay, just saying, okay, let's move on. So that's why we did, Bill and I did what we did.
Oh, I understand.
So like I say, if I misunderstood you, I apologize.
No, no, no.
I do feel bad about the way this has all played out and I, you know, some people in town have played it out even worse than what it was, so.
Well, you know, we got to have our drama.
Oh, yeah, and we're loaded with it at the moment, so.
No, I mean, when we talked, I had said that I had expressed in the past that I'd like to stick around until I was going to leave because there were some things coming up this summer that I wanted to kind of finish. But because we serve at your pleasure, I wasn't, I didn't feel comfortable pleading for my job to stay another two months. So, you know, I told you that I would, I wanted to stay, but if, you know, if you wanted to make the change at the new fiscal year, I'm not going to tell you guys what to do and, like I said, I wasn't going to, you know, plead for the job for three months. So it was up to you and you guys did what you did and that's, I've got no issue with that.
Okay. I mean, if we could reverse it, if we could very easily make an opening in that board, I'd love to have you back on there, but we can't do that unless, unless somebody steps down or says, you know, I'll, I'll back off the board for, you know, a while. So I just wanted to get that out and about and, you know, get it so you and I would have the face to face on this.
Right.
Yeah, so.
No, there's no, yeah, no, I understand exactly what you did and why you did it and, you know, like I said, we serve at your pleasure. So whatever you, you know, we're on or off depending on what you guys want, so that's where it goes.
Yeah, so, like I said, maybe I misunderstood then, so, and I do apologize for that.
That's all right.
But I'm more than happy to have you sit down there as the liaison and it's one less thing that we'll have to do, you know, for a while, so.
Enough.
And like I say, your knowledge is great down there, it's needed and it'll help also the transition between the new, the new chairman of that board as well, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
So should we make a motion to appoint a minister liaison?
We should.
Somebody want to do that?
Yeah.
Under new business?
Ed, you want to?
We're going to do it under new business.
Under new business.
So D, E, okay. All right, we're down to E now. All right.
So while we're talking about liaisons, there was a conversation, all three of you approved a memo that went out to all of the department heads and committees regarding the change of liaisons at the first of the fiscal year. You guys had a conversation and you made decisions to switch them up. Last week, there was some talk that we needed to revisit that, so I'd need to know the direction of the board in regards to the liaisons.
Every thought of what I am on, I'm happy where I am.
Me too.
So am I.
So.
Use the original?
I'll leave that there.
The original or the one approved at the start of the new fiscal year?
New fiscal year. Our latest revision.
Okay, next, let's do stand and solve update. I did, since.
Thanks, Ken.
Yeah, have a good night.
You too.
Since we're not discussing the agenda a whole lot prior to, I did, with anything that I felt like involved other people, I did make the call to them and ask them to come. Mr. Moody has abandoned obligations that had been pre-planned. From the conversation that I had with Mr. Witzel, I don't expect the decisions will be made tonight, so you shouldn't be sad.
Um, I've been in contact with TPD and Rubb Buildings on the changes we asked them to bring to us for this meeting here. I was under the understanding that today Rubb Buildings was gonna have, Bob from Rubb was gonna have the proposal with the excavation, all the other stuff that we asked him. And I talked to him while playing phone tag with him all morning long and I thought he was gonna have that here and I guess he hasn't. I'm gonna find out, I guess. Town Hall was closed, he must have showed up and just turned around and went back, so... So I'll try to contact him tomorrow so we can get that proposal up with the changes. TPD dropped me off, their proposal with some changes that we asked them if they would make. And he gave some copies, okay? And Jeff's worked on it.
Thank you, sir.
And if you look at the revised bid...
Move.
Okay, down at the...
How'd they do that?
Okay, if you look, that's why I made the suggestion last week that I did, that I believe that there's several amount of money to be saved if we decide to go with this bid. But if you look at the site work cost of $65,000, the payment performance bond, okay, $7,200, and then you, and the building permits, which I'm sure would be waived, being a municipality building, I can't imagine us paying a... So that's $3,000 some dollars. So right, just those two outlined items right there is, uh, 10-3 right there that was added in that really unnecessarily. Of course, on their part, they had to do it. And of course, the site work, $65,000. So, uh, let's see. And what they did is they added on, they asked me if there was any contingency, anything. And I told them on the foundation work that we would like to have something in writing that, because the foundations are not known, okay? So say if Scott and I did the excavation down there and we got down, it was seven feet below grade and we had virgin ground. What they've done is they put a $300 per yard, per cubic yard that's including rebar, pouring it, everything. So that's, that's in case of, you know, the foundation having to be, you know, brought down and whatever, any altercation beyond the four-foot frost wall that's below grade. So their overall quote building and foundation at $400,300... $400,330, $433,700.
All right, and they were at $509,000 before, right?
Yeah.
All right, now with this proposal, you're proposing that the road commissioners are gonna do the site work?
Well, I made the suggestion last week after looking, seeing that Rubb didn't even give us a price on excavation and their number was higher than we could afford. And so by looking at, with the materials we have that we have to get rid of at some point in time, get off our books, our payment costs and everything else, we believe we can do this considerably lower than this cost.
Okay, now Scott brought up a point at the last meeting where engineering... So you're gonna do this... If the road commissioners do the site preparation, then the company's gonna come in and have an engineer come in to make sure the ground is okay before they're gonna put their foundation and they're gonna guarantee the grant, correct?
The engineer for TPD, we haven't talked to the engineer through Rubb, but they really don't get into that aspect of it. That was, that's the only concern I had was whether or not they were able to do that part of it. But they were gonna come in, TPD was gonna come in and give us elevations, this and that. Without knowing what's on the ground, they can't, without test born, they can't, or test digging, they don't know. So obviously, when we get the virgin ground, the engineer's gonna have to show up. He's gonna show up and, you know, give the blessing to it. And also, we'll have to have Kenny Paul, our code officer, come down and do the same, you know. We want, it's kind of a joint adventure, you know, we want to make sure this is done right, so...
I don't know, so I'll ask. After you prep the area and you've got your hole dug for the foundation, would they normally do test holes then to go deeper? To make sure that that ground's gonna support that foundation? Or from what they see when they dig, that's all they need to know?
Typically, what you do is get down to virgin ground, see what you have for soils, you know. And, you know, on a project like this, you know, you're gonna have... That, the whole problem with this whole situation is the site itself. And, you know, the excavation cost, this excavation cost concerned me for the simple reason is this excavation cost did not include what's gonna happen if we come in unverge material. So that excavation cost could, I wouldn't say double, but it could go up considerably, which would blow this right out of the water, this building itself. So, and same thing with the other building, you know. We haven't got an excavation cost. He said he was working on it. When I got a voice message from today around 11 o'clock that he had a fellow come up to give some prices on it. Uh, he did know that we had to meet at 6:00. I let them all know to make sure that they were here. But, um, you know, this is, the issue I had with this, this whole project was the groundwork. Everything else is, you know, all engineered. It's, you know, plain Jane. You know what you're gonna get. It was below grade and with what we've had, that's why we're having a problem with the other building. So that's why I've come up with the suggestion that we do this. And obviously, you know, we're gonna have to get compaction tests and all that. But, um, you know, I believe we can, if, say, we do go with this or any other plan that, you know, we have all the materials at hand right now, save us a boatload of money.
So you feel road commissioners can do it for less than $65,000?
Oh, easily. You know, I mean, the thing is, is we got, what we gotta do is we've got a contract through Dayton Sand right now for our hot top. So what we gotta do is give them a rough idea of, you know, square footage on our hot top. We know what the building square footage is gonna be inside. It was the outsides that I was concerned about. They gave us a bid for a 50-by-50 foot apron out front. It's probably big enough to, you know, park your truck and, you know, get your loader around, but, um, as we know, last year, we had to plow around our last building. And any building that we put up, we're gonna have to be able to get access around it and plow it. And we really ought to have a hot top apron, at least a 12-foot apron on each side of it for snow removal and seal off the footings. So, you know, none of that was added in here. So with you guys is okay. What I can do is give Dayton Sand a call, get some numbers and some square footage, rough cost of hot top, what the hot tops are gonna cost. Because our, what we pay for our hot tops is a lot cheaper than most contractors are gonna pay. So see what we can get for a rough number on the hot top and, you know, I can give you an idea of excavation cost. Because pretty much the excavation cost is only gonna be time and materials, uh, time and labor, machine time and labor.
It'll be at the town rates.
The town rates. And all the material, the only materials that I see that we're gonna have to buy for this project would be our final, our final before hot top, our crushed gravel. Because we don't have any crushed gravel, processed crushed gravel. That would be the only thing that we can see. And, um, you know, we have roughly 800 to 900 yards of three-inch minus right now down to the town pit that is not being used and it's on our books and you guys have been honest about getting rid of it. We have to find a location to get rid of the material that's at the town shed now that we dig out. It's gonna be lomy, nasty stuff there that, you know, it's gonna have plenty of organic, so it'll grow grass. So we're thinking that what we can do is haul that material down to our town pit and use that to reclaim with, you know. So haul the material out of there, reclaim the pit at the same time, kind of kill two birds with one stone and close the pit up at the same time, so... But I can, you know, with you guys' permission, I can go along, throw some numbers together for you to give you an idea. And I can, but I really want to move on this as soon as we can. These guys, both companies, you know, with Rubb, they're out. They're gonna have to slide us in. The other company, you know, they got 10 to 12 week waiting for their trust, before they get their arch beams, so, you know, they're all... I think we really want to get on the ball with this. We don't want to snooze on it. So what I'd make a recommendation, I don't know if we can have a special meeting. I'd like to have Scott, obviously, here and see if we can get something together there where we can, you know, ponder some things before we have, you know, to go over all this. You know, make sure we get everything figured out before we make a decision whether or not Thursday night is a good time for that or not. But I don't know what you guys' schedule is, but I'd like to schedule a meeting with you guys and do that.
Just a good time to talk about that?
Yeah.
Okay. We are under the understanding that we have to tell the bank tomorrow. Is that... Okay.
I didn't realize this where you were going, I'm sorry. The ID contact, Peter, who is the contact with Goodford Savings Bank, and because of the time constraints, we're waiting for some of that information to come back, he has agreed to give us another week, so...
Till next Friday.
Right, until next Friday. So next Thursday, if you could work out with David and Scott, whatever meetings you guys need to have, as long as you can make a decision next Thursday on the company that you're gonna use, the 2.55 rate will still be good if you can participate in work for the closing of the loan and the appraisal of the building.
Okay.
So you can get all those answers to us before next week?
Yeah, yeah, I can either email them to you or whatever you want. You know, I'll contact Scott and see what he thinks and all that. Because like I said, right now, they're talking a... This company here, they didn't really give us a time schedule on the Rubb building, but they said they would fit us in. But this one here, if they, from what I get out of it, if they get the okay, we're talking, you know, having the building up by November 1st. So, and that would be the latest, we'd want to do it due to the, you know, putting our salt and sand up. I mean, we could, if it goes a little further on, we obviously use the other building till that one's going, but, um, obviously, we don't want to drag our feet on this, so... I do, I do think that the numbers that they got here, we can do that very easily.
Should we add those up in business for next week?
Yep. And make sure Scott sees this and you guys talk about it and then both of you be here next week so we can make a decision?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't know what his schedule is. Jen, I'll try to contact him, but can you email that to him? Can you scan that, email that to him? And just in case I miss him there. Actually, I think you guys have got all my other copies, so, um, yeah.
David, on the, on the second page, it has the exclusions. They're all pretty self-explanatory.
He said he made a couple changes on that. I didn't get to go through that. I never got this paper until 1, 2 o'clock.
What is SWWPP? It says that the proposal excludes a SWP, SWWPP plan and monitoring.
You know what?
If you can find that out for next week, that'd be great.
You know what I mean? Oh, too many abbreviations, I don't know. Yeah, I can, oh, definitely, definitely, but...
One of the concerns Scott has is that we had an engineered plan to know what to go by for...
Yeah.
Doing the site work, so...
You know, I...
It's pretty straightforward and easy by...
The building, the... I disagreed with him on the engineering for the simple reason is, on this building, we, we all know, we gotta be on virgin ground, we gotta hit. And the engineer's gonna come out and tell us whether or not this is gonna be good. I just don't want to spend the extra money and then the extra time. It's a square box. We know we gotta have our 95% compaction. You know, we know, that's all pretty basic. So I just didn't want to spend the extra money on that part of it when we've already got an engineer. You know, either one of these companies is gonna have to have an engineer, whoever we pick, so, um, but, uh, yeah. So no, I mean, the engineer, he says he's gonna go down and pull elevation. They're gonna give us an elevation and everything on, you know, final grade and all that. Down below grade's gonna be the only question. And he's gonna be able to answer that question for us, so...
Okay, and the difference in the payment and performance bond is just because they're not doing the excavation now?
Exactly.
So their insurance is cheaper?
So this, well, what it is, is they don't have to insure us. We're insured through you guys.
Oh, but if they hired a sub, they would have to insure the sub?
By going through the sub, what's gonna end up happening is they have to do a bond with him so he finishes the project. Not saying he wouldn't. So right there, that's $7,200, you know, that, right out of, right out of the blue, so...
It's half your excavation cost.
That's gonna pay, you know, that'll pay most of the sides of the building. I would not most, it'll do one side probably, you know? So I mean, it's just that little stuff there that, that I was afraid of. And the biggest thing that really worries me is that when we talked about this last week was, I believe, right here, this proposal excludes monetary management, off-site transportation of disposal of contaminated material, da-da-da-da-da. We know what's down there, so if it excludes it, that's an automatic extra right down the road. So, and I am all done. Any other questions?
Nope. Sounds good.
Okay.
Put them on the agenda?
6:00 Thursday?
Yes.
And I'll get you as much information as I can before then.
Thanks.
Talk to you later.
All right.
Next.
Because, Mr. Vannell, is there a planning board meeting this evening?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you wouldn't mind coming forward, some zoning information the boards that have received right now that you could share with them at the same time?
Up here?
Yeah. Yeah. So as the board recalls, and anybody that was at town meeting, we got an email from Joe Lakowski on June 12th, just a couple of days after the referendum election, basically explaining what happened now that the voters essentially put two 4.226s in the zoning. Okay, so now with both those questions, he told you in an email what happened and that both items had to go into the actual ordinance. He told you that he spoke to Attorney Warren and Flue Ellen at the municipal and they all recommended, and I quoted, that you get the inconsistency fixed as soon as possible. So this is one of the things that you've told me you want to deal with at a special town meeting. So this email is not new to anybody. The planning board should have seen it by now. So as a follow-up, Mr. Lakowski has been working on how to address that and that came in early today, so I'm trying to email it to you guys. Here are some copies. So what this information is, is he's attached essentially three questions. So he's attached three questions and after a conversation, after a conversation with him, he is recommending that we're gonna go with question one and question one and two, which are the first ones. Let me try to explain this. Mr. Lakowski's biggest question is, what exactly do you want to put in front of the voters at the special town meeting? What I said to him, what I've heard from you, and this is your time to correct me if I'm wrong, is that what I've heard you three telling me is that the voters in Acton voted in both of those ordinances. So we want to give them the option of taking one or the other, but we do not want to allow them to turn both down because the voters overwhelmingly, well, the voters passed and voted. So we want one of them in there. We don't care if it's the selectmen, we don't care if it's the planning board, but you believe that one of them needed to stay. So you wanted the question written by Joe that gave that option, is that correct?
I guess so.
That's what you wanted, too. You don't want a warrant article that could possibly pull out 4.226 altogether.
No.
Okay, so this, that's what they, that's what you...
And you can do that? You can write an article that way?
Well, this is where it gets interesting. So that was the direction I gave him based on what I believed I understood. So now that we know that is correct, so there are two question ones. And the one in the very back, we'll get to, we'll get to why that one's there. So essentially, question one, shall the town of Acton zoning ordinance be amended to retain in the ordinance only the following version of 4.226? And it goes on to list the selectmen's recommendation, okay? And the key words in there are to retain and only, okay? So if the townspeople vote yes, then the selectmen's recommendation stays in the zoning and they're done. If, at the bottom, question one fails and you proceed to question two, you are gonna get the planning board's recommendation that says, shall the town of Acton be amended to retain only the following version of the 4.226? So it gives them an option of doing one or the other, but not both. Now, Mr. Lekowski didn't wanna point out that it is certainly possible that they vote no on both of them. If they vote no on both of them, which is strongly not recommended because you have a ordinance that's trumping itself, then it's gonna stay the way it is, and you're going to be dealing with, um, you're going to be dealing with anything from, you know, everyone, people are gonna question the zoning, they're gonna question the code enforcement, you know. If they're both in there, are you going with the more stringent, you know, who's giving the instruction? He believes that it opens the town up to lawsuits if they both stay in there. But that's all conversation that you can have at a special town meeting. Because it's a special town meeting and not a referendum, the public would be invited to speak, you possibly would have Mr. Lekowski there, and he would talk about the differences. Let me just go onto the last page, Chip, I need you, it should get in there. So the last page, the question one that you see on the last page, that is if the selectmen only want to give the voters the option of leaving yours in there. Okay, you could say, we could have just question one. Shall the town be amended to retain only the following version? And if that was the case, you were not even putting the planning boards on the table. My understanding was that you, you wanted to give the people the choice. So that's what he's looking at, um, so questions, comments, concerns that I can take back to him?
Well, I feel where they voted both of them in, that, um, we should allow them now to decide which one they want to stay in. So I think the first question is the way to go.
Well, one and two go together.
Right.
Because notice at the bottom of one, it says if...
If question one fails, proceed to question two.
Yep.
Just a quick, a quick moment of, um, about to interrupt, but if anybody sees me on my phone, I am communicating with my staff in the other office, one of which is the bar. We have another issue going on there with transactions, so please don't think that I'm being rude. Um, I am dealing with business via phone, thank you to technology.
Why doesn't the stipulation of the ordinance where you have two competing districts or two competing issues, the stricter one would, would be the one that you would use? Why wouldn't that work in this? Which then would be, the planning board's version would be the one that would be, uh, the winner, so to speak, or whatever.
From what he told us, because they both won, both have to go into the ordinance, which makes it, into the zoning, which makes it very confusing, but he's saying that until we get this changed, we are gonna go with the more stringent, the planning boards, um...
All right, okay.
But we can't leave both of them in there because that can cause a lot of problems, so he's saying we have to, as soon as possible, fix it, so there's only one in there.
All right, got it.
Because it's a matter of interpretation.
Yes.
Someone could question it. There's nothing positive about having a double negative in your...
Oh, I know, I know.
So...
You can go to court, and we don't want that, so...
So what is the direction of the board?
I think it makes sense to put the first two questions in as recommended. If we go with just the last question, that puts us kinda back in a box where we were before. I'd rather give the public the chance to choose one of the two that they want. Now, if, this is at a special town meeting, can they change the wording of this, or is this still another?
Not a zoning ordinance. My understanding is zoning ordinance, whatever's presented at, at the, the town meeting is what has to be. I don't believe you can change them. I could be wrong, but I thought zoning has to stay.
That's fine, I think that's a good way to do it.
Well, she's smiling at me.
I'm not sure I agree, but...
That might be, I don't know.
The wording of the question can probably, if someone wanted to make a motion to take the word, you know, a particular word out, I mean, I, I think that I may agree that you can't change the actual zoning piece of it.
Right, right.
But the wording of the question could possibly change, but again, I mean, I don't think that's...
But that could change the meaning of the whole deal, too.
It could, correct.
Why, can we find out ex...
That's something that I don't think that any of us should be answering unspotted. Certainly, we will look into it.
I just did.
And have a public hearing on it prior to that.
That's, that was my other question, is there gonna be a public hearing before the...
We have to.
But, all right, okay. So a lot of this will come out ahead of time.
And actually, by law, you don't have to have a public, public, um, hearing on it because it's an open town meeting.
Yeah, but...
Referendums you do.
Oh, okay.
If the board so chooses to have one, they can.
We always do. Zoning, I mean, we've always had public hearings when we've had a zoning ordinance change, whatever it is. And this one could be contentious enough that it's only fair to throw it out there for a public hearing first. It'll delay the process another few weeks or whatever, but...
Well, that's where we have a problem, because we haven't gotten to it yet, but the school is trying to put forward $60,000 towards taxes, so we have to get that done before we commit.
So you got a date.
So what, we'll find out soon, but that's, that's the reason we're having the emergency town meeting, is we wanna get that $60,000, so lower the tax rate before we commit taxes, so that we're gonna do this at the same time instead of having two special town meetings.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I get it.
Yeah.
Well, whatever the minimum time is to have a public hearing, I mean, do you need the... You guys write the warrant, so all you have to do is decide how you wanna go, and then whatever the minimum time is to set up a public hearing, and then what's the minimum time between that and a vote? Is that gonna push it too far?
If we don't have to have a public hearing, there wouldn't be any minimum time, correct?
Just the posting time.
Yeah, so we just have to do the posting time, so we can fit it in.
But again, we're not on record of answering that until we have a few minutes to look into it, make sure that we've got several items on the special town meeting, so before we rule out or, or don't rule out a public hearing, I'm hoping that the board will give me a list of everything on the special town meeting, and then they'll decide if they need to have a public hearing. You'll be the first to know.
Well, thanks.
'Cause you're gonna have to bring it downstairs and tell the planning board.
All right. Well, I'll tell them what we've got so far.
And just, you know, I did leave, um, Mr. Smith a voicemail inviting him to the meeting as well, as it was permanent to the planning board.
Thanks for doing this, Chip.
So if we're still in department heads, um, I guess we'll go to, on my list as well, the fire station, fire rescue.
Back on this here for one second, though. We've gotta vote whether we want, which, which one we want.
What is that?
This is the, the planning board?
Yeah, I added that to...
Okay, add that to F, yep.
Peter, before you start on the fire department, can I just ask you a quick question?
No.
I don't got any whiz. When you got, in Sanford, you put up a new salt shed and you used your, um...
We used a lot of our forces in-house to do a lot of stuff.
To do the, to do the groundwork and all that and that work for you and saved you a lot of money?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Same with Dayton, there's our paving contractors, like, it was very cheap to have the paving done inside as well.
Oh, so you did your own paving too to save all...
Dayton did, but they're contracted for us.
Yeah, but because you got a bid for them to do all your roads, so it was a lot cheaper than anybody else could get it.
Correct.
Okay. What you got?
Keith, Mr. Fire Chief, I was summoned to come up.
Very, so that's how I'm answered. Um, well, as a continuing conversation that you guys had from last week, um, regards to the fire rescue consolidation, um, I know that when we talk about this special town meeting and the items that are on there, I'm gonna be looking, you know, looking to you for specific, specifics of what you want on there, um, anything to do with fire and rescue. Um, the attorney did draft some, a bill, not some, excuse me, drafted a bill of sale from the Acton ambulance to the town, so we would like you to review those. You're probably, what, a week, 10 days into our 30-day license posting, so wondering...
How many days?
Uh, we're 10 days in.
Yep.
So I know that you're, you wanted to be working on an ordinance, so just wondering if there's anything that you're waiting for the town on or waiting for the board on?
Oh, for the ordinance, we had a good meeting. Um, the original people have been working on the consolidation, if you wanna call it that, for the fire and EMS. Um, Mr. Neal was gracious enough to, um, retype it all up. We just have a little bit more tweaking to do and hoping to present that to the selectmen next Thursday.
So we're gonna add them to new business?
If you could, I'd appreciate it, yes.
Is it possible for the board to review in advance?
Absolutely.
And should we not send it off to Brad, too?
That's up to you, I mean, do you wanna look at it yourself first, or do you want Brad to look at it first?
Well, your committee has come up with it, right? So when you give it to us, you're pretty much done with it?
Yes.
All right, so, yeah, I would, I would like to have Brad take a look at it.
And there is a member from the selectmen's office on the board.
Yes, definitely, yeah. No, we, um, you didn't meet this week, correct? Or did you meet last night?
We were supposed to.
Okay, good, so I didn't miss a meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Um, yeah, the meeting we had the week before, we went through every page of that, and, uh, it worked out quite well. And I thank Mr. Neal for retyping that and putting the changes that we did in it. Yep.
Yeah, there's more tweaking to it, but nothing...
Yeah, so probably one more meeting next week, Monday night? Do you wanna do Monday night?
We can do Monday night, sure.
Yeah, okay, is that, is that okay with you, Nick, Monday night?
18:30.
Yeah, if we can meet Monday night at 6:30, for those of us that can't do military time.
You did well.
Um, yeah, that should do it, and we, if we can finish it that night.
We can hand it right off, or send it right out.
Yep, yep, 'cause, yeah, if you get any tweaks, it's probably something minor, 'cause we did a lot there that other meeting, so. It looked good, so, okay.
So the committee's gonna finish up with it Monday, the town will have it in hand Tuesday, and are you instructing me to give it to the lawyer and try to have an answer back by Thursday's meeting? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
All right, anything else?
Uh, the only other thing, we've got an email from Main Municipal in regards to, um, some of these things. It says, Jennifer Michelle, do you have a copy of the EMS license yet? Have not added the medical malpractice, I'll add the coverage once the license is issued. So we answered that, saying that we're waiting for the 30 days.
Correct.
Has the town taken legal ownership of the ambulance and the equipment, um, and so we need to add it all individually? Is it the board's, what is the board's intention as far as when they're gonna take ownership and consider this bill of sale?
We have to wait till you have a medical license before you, you can run it, so we have to stay under their medical license until then?
For the ambulance itself, yes.
So...
You can only have one license for that ambulance under that VIN number.
So your suggestion is we should take ownership on the day that you can transfer the license?
If you want to take everything all at once, yes.
From, take, transfer the license from the ambulance to the fire station, and that would be the day that we would sign the, the bill of sale?
Okay.
And if you could have the ambulance association have it signed and notarized before that?
Yeah, I'll have them look at this as well, just, uh, review it as well, 'cause I don't think they've seen it, have they?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you said that you were planning on going right up to Augusta on that day and having it happen that day?
That is our plan, that is correct, yep.
I don't think you can do any of that until after the town meeting, too, so, 'cause we have to have the...
Accept the ordinance.
Yep, we have to get the ordinance in place first, too, so. It'll be, I'm sorry, the fire and rescue... The fire rescue ordinance is all part of it as well, so.
So you, you want that, and that's gonna be on the special town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, this...
The ordinance is.
Yes, the ordinance is.
Yes.
And once that's accepted, and we've met the 30 days with the paper and everything that Main EMS requires, then we'll be ready to go, so.
So just real quick, the rest of the questions, um, so they'll leave the year, make model of the ambulance, and either the cost of the new or a green value, um, list of all the mobile equipment on the ambulance and the value, um, and then their acquiring as to where the ambulance will be housed, and if we're insuring the new building. Um, the way the bill of sale is written, I mean, you're taking up ownership of everything, correct?
Right.
So, um, if I can leave this copy with you, and you can get, make sure we have the answers by the time they're ready to sign?
Yep.
A lot of that's on that bill of sale, too, the VIN numbers and all of the ambulance, something's on there.
What do you recommend about hiring? Should we advertise and start interviewing now so that we'd be ready to go with staff, too?
I, we are working on writing up, um, for staffing, you know, what we need to do to go out for staffing in the papers and stuff, so we are working on that. Um, I'd like to bring it up to you to have you guys look at it first, obviously, before it goes out, well, it kinda has to anyways, but we are drafting up some, uh, job descriptions and stuff, yes.
I'd like to suggest, and I don't know if you guys agree or not, that, um, we have two steps. First step would be your committee that's brought us to this point and that's writing the ordinance, go through, and then send those people onto the board with, um, you on, with us to make the final decisions. Should there be more people than we have spaces for, so who the final people are? But you guys can kindly go through, 'cause you have the knowledge, and decide who should go to the next step.
Okay.
And does that work?
Yes, do you like the first interview process you're talking?
Yeah, you know, so we have two steps, so they go in, in case we get, you know, 50 applications, you never know. I mean, some people aren't even gonna be qualified, or they're going to school and they won't be qualified.
Correct.
You guys can, you can get that, you can, uh, just pass on who's ready to go and who you feel comfortable in hiring as permanent employees of the town. Um, and then we can meet and do the final, um, interview then, um, with the board and yourself and, uh, whoever else you recommend from the committee.
Yeah, so the HRs as well.
Yes, yeah, and, uh, then we can make the final decision, okay? So if we can get advertisers as soon as possible, so we can get through that first step anyways and be ready to go, so we can have, 'cause I understand you're having trouble keeping the shifts filled, right?
They are getting better, but yes, yes. For those of you who don't know, we started trying to do some staffing at the station at a minimal pay. Uh, we're doing okay. Um, just a heads up, today we did have another rescue call. Time, time mattered, counted, and we were staffed today, and we took care of the call, and it definitely made a difference for today as well.
When you staff, you always have at least two, though, right?
Uh, no, we do the best we can, if only one's coming on, and at least we'll get the fire or EMS unit out, do first response until additional shows up, just like what we do now.
Okay, but there's no, like, OSHA requirement or anything, that there has to be two people if we have somebody staying there, or, no?
Yep.
Okay.
You have to have two to transport, but a minimum, a minimum of two, one being an EMT, but, but, no, if you can go out with the ambulance with an EMT on it and start, that's great.
But one can stay in the building by themselves?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it for me?
Thanks, Peter.
I was glad to come to the meeting while I was being called off for a change.
Dick has something to pertain to this, too, does he?
You have something else to add?
Yeah, I'd just like to offer this, uh, I'd made up a things-to-do list, so a kind of a reminder of what, some of the steps we need to follow through. And, uh, I'd just like to provide copies to you, I provide copies to the, uh...
Has PD seen it, or Chief seen it and agreed with everything that's on the list?
I haven't seen the list, no.
Okay.
This is in summary, and these are just some other things that, uh...
Okay.
That, uh, you look at it over, and, uh, in case there's something that, you know, somebody's overlooked and whatnot. But there's some steps...
Oh, sorry, you're on the ambulance committee, right?
Yep.
You know...
What it is, there's some steps that the ambulance association has to take to formally dissolve. And then, once, uh, that goes through, uh, but in the meantime, there's, uh, I see no reason why they can't transfer the equipment, all equipment, over to the town, and then you've got the town funds to turn around and, uh, when you feel everything is okay, probably okay by the legal people, then you can turn around and start manning it. But ambulance association, it gets to take some actions to turn it over, and I think Michelle's working on that, so...
Yeah, this has pretty much everything we just discussed.
Yeah.
So, it's great, thank you.
Is your committee also coming up with job descriptions, Peter?
Close the question.
Is your committee also coming up with job descriptions, or do you already have job descriptions?
We're working on it.
Okay.
I've been working on job descriptions.
We gather around from other towns and cities, and obviously fits what's best for Acton.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
What's next?
And just for continued clarification, I'm still working off the department heads and not to go to the agenda items yet, right?
Okay. All right.
Is that my instruction?
Yep.
Sorry, the list, um, so Heathco LLC, which is our, um...
I should put that in your pile, I guess.
People have the outstanding liquor license, um, you guys met with her last week, we did invite her for this week's meeting. Um, the attorney wrote a letter that you spoke to Attorney Warren, and then Bill and Ed both spoke to Mr. Warren as well, and he outlined in an email a summary of all of the conflicts that he found with the liquor license in regards to the seven booths versus the entire establishment, and some things that they needed to, um, really to, to look at, and all of his concerns. So that letter was mailed to Heathco on July 10th, um, and again, I encourage them to come to tonight's meeting. So the question is simply, do you want it on the agenda, um, are you, what are you doing with it?
Well, we have 120 days for them to make a decision what they're gonna do. If it comes to us, the way I understood the letter, if it comes to us the way it is now, we have to deny it. If they wanna withdraw the application and, and reapply with the proper license request, um, then we can go forward with it, but it, we'll have to make a decision within 120 days of, was it the public hearing or when she gave us the application?
I would say the public hearing, but I haven't checked out.
Yeah, it's in, it's in his letter, or, or maybe he just told us on the phone. So I would say, let's put it on the agenda for next Thursday night, so it doesn't automatically... So I would say let's put it on the agenda for next Thursday night so it doesn't automatically become passed. We'd discuss it again and, um, if they haven't come up with more information, then we'll have to go with the attorney's recommendation and deny it and then let them reapply.
I just wanted to let you know that, um, Mr. Lakowski, Dale Barrows, and Tom Gore have all confirmed that six o'clock next week works for them. You know, I, I essentially emailed them and let them know that you changed your meetings to start at six, but based on the way this evening's going and the department heads, I mean, I'm not sure you'll see them before seven, but not, you know, being able to control that time, they will be here at six along with Mr. Lakowski, who you're paying. So, um, what is, I don't know if you want to change your direction regards to next week or?
For that, one night, have Joe go first?
Especially for, yeah, especially if we're paying, we need to, yeah, bump him up a little.
Have him right at six.
And what exactly, what exactly is, is the goal of the meeting? What exactly, what, what is he coming prepared to, to discuss? I mean, this little red schoolhouse has been lingering for weeks and weeks, so what exactly are you requesting from him?
Well, it's my hope he's going to explain to them that even if they pursue the petition and go to a notary republic, that we still can't put it in, change the zoning. And we have to instruct Ken that he cannot give them a permit to build where it is. So it's, that he can answer all their questions about why and everything legally. And so it's, then it's up to them whether they decide to go forward with it after that.
I think one of the big questions in the whole thing was how does it fall into the comp plan? So if he can give us an outline of how it does not meet the comp plan, I think that will pretty much take care of the situation, one way or the other.
The, his instruction will be to discuss why it's being denied and whether the comp plan, so we're not spending a lot of time on the corrections to get it in line, I mean, that's not, you're not hiring the town attorney for that?
No. No, I mean, that's been, that's been the biggest thing I've heard is how does it not fall into the comp plan? So if we can get a clear definition of that, I think that will clear up a lot of it.
Uh, the next thing is pretty minor. Uh, three rivers dropped us off in person and asked the two, I'll get one of these. Possibly want to mention it under announcements for upcoming breakfast if they have.
Under announcements?
On wherever you would go to.
Okay.
There has been a communication recently regarding the Blueberry Hill Tower. This is a copy of an email and I did attach the actual contract as well. I'm not going to read it at all, but essentially, you guys agree to pay the Blueberry Hill X amount of dollars for the year, and their contribution is only 1,200, because that's all they feel that it's worth. He gives you some advice in there that you may or may not agree with, but essentially he's looking for, wanting to know how you'd want his hundred dollar contribution. With your okay, you can simply draft a bill and send it to them. It sounds like that's what he'd like us to do for the flat 1,200 dollars. And then the town is going to be, um, responsible for coming up with the rest. This is.
Motion on the bill? Or do we put that on as G, G?
G?
Yeah, these are all the things we have to do under new business.
So the lease on the Blueberry Hill will be 4,800, the town's contribution is 3,600, and the New York County Communications will pay 1,200.
Okay.
Special town meeting, um, actually, let's table that until we get to the school. We're going to need to know some more information. Uh, the solid waste ordinance, there's been some talk amongst the board that you want to make changes to the solid waste ordinance. I know that's something you've been talking about. Um, do you have a draft copy? Do you have a question? I mean, what are we, where are we at?
Dick, you have that all set, right? The solid waste ordinance?
I can forward a copy.
So you're happy with it the way it is now? Do you want to review it anymore? Do you want Mr. Mann? I mean, I just want to make sure I understand your direction.
Bob's already seen it.
If you forward it.
Okay.
I'd say let's forward another copy to everybody and it's been a number of months since we've seen that, so. I'd like to see it again.
Next week we'll put it. This is, um, I don't think we need to go over new business. This is a poll permit that was signed last week. You inadvertently signed the town's copy rather than Fairpoint, so I just need signatures on the other copy for the two of you that signed the first one. Actually, I think I'll pretty much sign it. While he's doing that, um, start talking about tax commitment days.
I saw you sign.
There's a second copy that's not signed. So when we start thinking about tax commitment, we need to get, um, our assessors in line. Make sure that they have all of their building land changes into the software. We need to make sure that the auditor has had a chance to look at all of the funds and can make a recommendation to the board as far as how much to move forward to offset, if that's something you guys decide to do. And then we need to figure in the time of, um, getting the tax bills printed in mail before the October 15th date.
If I, if I remember correctly, the question we asked on the floor wasn't this year, we didn't ask if we could put up to 200,000. We asked if we could put 200,000 forward. Isn't that correct?
I'd have to look at the warrant.
I think that's the way we did it this year.
So you're, you already know how much you're going to move 200,000 forward regardless of what's in there? Does that make any construction?
I think we'd have to see what the warrant article says. I mean, if we only need to move 190, we're, I mean.
I can get a copy of that.
If it says two, then two it is.
The difference between the up two and, or just two, right?
Right, yeah, it's every year we've asked up two, but I think Michelle had us ask for the two this year because it was going to be such a big increase because of the salt chatty and the fire, fire and ambulance.
So with that said, we can essentially, if that's the case, take the odd round of picture.
Yeah.
So that knocks down one bill. Um, the assessor is going to have, he, he pretty much has all of his work done. He's tying up a couple of loose knots. Um, the treasurer and I would like to see you commit taxes no later than Thursday, August 20th. That gives us, it's approximately a three-week process to get these tax bills out. Although most people know the taxes are due on, you know, October 15th, courtesy, we certainly don't want them hitting their doorsteps, you know, there to before, so not sure what, what kind of goal you guys have for the tax commitment that you think.
Has Bruce already started doing the?
Bruce has not started, started the audit, but that would be for 14, 15, so I really wouldn't. If we're not looking to them for an undesignated fund opinion, you know what I mean, the auditors really wouldn't have any other. The, the next year.
So we don't have to have the audit completed because we're not looking for them to tell us how much to put forward?
To commit.
If the warrant article is written the way that you've indicated it is, then, and the town's people have agreed to 200,000, then you're going to be tied at 200,000.
Right.
It's a similar situation that you were in with the school. So I guess, you know, we need to see that. I can certainly step out and get the warrant and follow up on it if you'd like.
No, that's all right. Um, any idea when Bruce is going to start?
He's going to start within the next probably two weeks.
Okay.
But again, I mean, he's auditing the 14, 15, we're committing for 15, 16.
Right, but I still would like to know what the undesignated fund balance is.
Before you commit?
Well, unless the, unless it does say what I think it says, then we have to do the 200,000. But if we don't, then I would like to know, you know, how much is in there.
We have a property located on Route 109, tax map 232 Lot 6. The assessor has pulled the deeds for the surrounding properties. This, this essentially was a property that was split off in several pieces. There was only always one remaining piece left, which they called Lot 6. The property owner has disagreed for several years that, that it even really exists. It's been about a year ongoing that they have, you know, lined up the stone walls and they've, they've cross compared everything. And the assessor has made the recommendation that it does not exist and that this individual doesn't own the property. That's how he feels as well. He has not paid the taxes on it since the original split because he didn't think there was anything left over. The prior mapping company did, it kind of, it kind of got assigned to him. So with your permission, we'll prepare abatements for those years and bring it before you next week.
That's a treasure land.
So we're going to abate them? We can go back that many years?
Yes, because it's a foreclosure, it's a town-owned property anyways.
Oh, okay.
We're foreclosed on it because we.
Didn't pay the taxes.
Didn't pay the taxes.
But there's no piece of land for us to sell.
He, he knew all along it didn't exist, but.
Yep. So he doesn't get any money back, though, because he's never paid the taxes on it? So it's just a wash? Okay.
So may I put on this agenda?
Sure.
Please.
Everybody's favorite time of year, town reports. Um, I bring this up because you have said to me more than once, the fiscal year ends June 30th. Why we're printing town reports in December or January has, has always been a question. If the fiscal year has just ended, this essentially is the time for you to set a schedule for, for the town report and decide how you want to deal with your department heads and start reaching out to everybody and putting a deadline to print for the 14, 15 town report.
How much time do you think we should give them?
Personally?
Yeah. When would you like to go to print?
I don't have a preference. I mean, I, I believe that, that most all departments, you know, thinking that, that Michelle and I is probably the most tedious. In a matter of a couple of weeks, three weeks, we, we can get ours together. We tend to wait until the last minute, or I tend to wait until the last minute because I don't want to print anybody's names in the books. You know, if I do all my real estate taxes unpaid as of June 15th, because that's your deadline, and then you wait another two months for one of your departments, I now have to redo all that, or the amount of people that paid in that period end up in the book when they're really paid off, you know? And that's just not something that, so whatever date or whatever timeline you guys set, I would just encourage you to, or urge you to stand by it.
How about the date that we're picking for committing taxes was at August 24th?
I was thinking the end of August, or, you know, by the last day of August.
It was the 20th.
Commitment date, yes, Bill's on the 20th.
20th, yeah.
I mean, your deadline should be, I mean, some Friday essentially, any, you're looking at August, so today is the.
What's the last Friday in August?
The last Friday, because that's going to give them at least eight weeks.
That's too much.
August 28th is the last.
21st, we're going to commit taxes on the 20th, 21st?
Sure.
Bill?
No, 20th.
Yeah, I know, we're going to commit taxes on the 20th, but we're going to give the department heads until the 21st to get their letters for the town report.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So what is this memo that I'm drafting to the department head's going to say?
If they haven't got their report in by the 21st, Friday the 21st, then they won't, their report will not be in the town report this year.
That's what we've done in the past.
But we've never stood by it.
Right.
We've never held to it.
Always, always a first time.
That's your choice, I just, you know what I mean, for the people that do put them in in time and have the date sensitive ones, you know.
How long does it take to get their report printed?
Probably two weeks.
So we'd have it done before taxes, before they get their tax bills? All right, let's.
Do you think it's feasible to have the town report all done and printed by the middle of September?
I think you could have had it done by July, but.
Month isn't over yet.
I mean, I, I would assume, and there are some departments.
I have reasons for.
Left. I mean, most of us have to do monthly reports, so it's just a matter of consolidating the, the letter, you know, consolidating the information. I mean, you know, it's certainly no offense to the other department heads, but they're writing a page, a page of, of information. I mean, your letter is one page.
I wrote three, you consented to sound one this last year.
There was a reason. Uh, I could get that original copy for grammar and we could go over it if you'd like.
You might want, might know how to open that one up.
Nevertheless, um, I think, you know, it would be nice next year to start thinking about it the first of June so that by, you know, the end of, so everybody knows that, you know, this is, because it's, you know, when people come in and ask for town reports and they're still at print in February or March, it was for the prior fiscal year. I mean, why bother to spend the money?
Yeah.
You know, so I think you're giving them plenty of time.
Okay.
Including yourselves to start thinking about who you're going to dedicate the town report to and your own letter that one of the three of you need to work on.
Okay.
It's better to do it now, too, rather than waiting until September, October, because last year is still fresh in everybody's mind.
Will we be sending out any reminder notices? Because I will be preparing a memo that will go out tomorrow.
And we'll remind them as.
I'd say it says, no reminder notices will be sent. Let's see if we can get them to do it. I mean, it, it, they need to get it in our time, like you say.
Okay.
Yeah. Yours next week, PD.
Okay. Uh, next is the transfer station phone. Um, there have been problems with the transfer station phone. Apparently when it rains, the transfer station phone does not work. You call the transfer station on a rainy day, it's busy. Who knew? Uh, I've been in contact with VCN and essentially they have tested the line. They can't find any problems with it until it rains again. So the next time it rains and they're open, they'll send a technician out there. So that's just an FYI for you to pass along to your, whoever's the liaison.
Yeah, who is this, where, where did this, this, this particular effort come from, anyway?
VCN is a company, um, believe it or not, similar to Verizon, that gives us a municipal rate. I mean, we're paying pennies. And one of the only downfalls when you use a company like this is service. But then, you know, you, you guys sign contracts to go up to bid for phone services like other things, and they've always been the lowest.
Well, and this year, if we had Verizon, they were on strike for several months. You wouldn't have gotten service from them either, so.
Uh, next on my list is the gym memberships. So gym memberships, based on your, your previous discussions, have always run from July 1st to June 30th. So the end of June comes around, everybody's card should be, everybody's card is expired, everybody has stopped paying for June 30th. Usually, because my office is in control of it and, or I should say responsible for it, and 4th of July weekend, we don't get around to turning the cards off right away because, but honestly, it's just not a top priority for me. We are in the process of, of working on that and getting signs posted that people need to, you know, repay if they want to stay in it. So a couple of questions on the, um, assumption of risk. I wanted the board to have a chance to take a look at that and see if there's any changes. I did take it home myself, to ask Mr. Moore to review it because really if someone gets hurt at the gym and sues us for malpractice.
Didn't he write this last year?
He wrote it last year, but laws and statutes change.
Exactly.
So wanted you to look at it, see if you wanted to make any changes. Um, the other thing about the, the gym is that, you know, every, at least once a week, someone comes into my office and pleads to allow monthly payments. You know, some people are only here for a certain amount of time. Um, some people, you know, some people only want to do it for two or three months at a time. They are asking that, that the board really reconsider, um, allowing partial registrations. You have sort of five copies. Can I help you a little? May I see along? Is the floor open? Does that have a question?
Didn't we set it up that there was like a three-month thing? If you were just going to use it in the summer or you're just going to use it in the winter? Or did we stop doing that?
You set up for a snowbird, which is for people that do not live here year-round, that only come up in the summer. And that's... Those aren't the people that are coming forward. These are... These are year-round residents that quite honestly just can't afford to pay the $240 upfront and, you know, or maybe they want to try it for a couple of months and see if they like it or, you know, it's a financial thing.
About quarterly, would that... How would it do... How would it impact your office if we changed to quarterly?
You know, I mean, I don't want to be, you know, I want you guys to make the decision that you think best suits the taxpayers and it not have to do with the burden in my office.
Yeah, okay.
Because I tell you what it entails, you know, it's not going to be on me that that's why you decided to not do that.
Okay, yeah.
If it's something that you think that you want to offer to your residents, then my staff and I will make it happen.
Yeah.
How do you work it now with the snowbirds? Do they pay at the same time as everybody else?
No.
So you have two... You're collecting twice a year already.
Well, we're collecting, it could be all the time. I mean, not, you know, if... People that are going to re-sign up for July 1, you know, that may pay... You probably have a half a dozen that will come in and pay the $240 and take it for the year. You know, I probably have another dozen people that will wait until fall, you know, they're already... They're out and about in the summer and they don't use it, so they might as well save the money because it's prorated. So a lot of my school people will come in in September, October, November. So people could sign up anytime during the year. It's prorated through June 30th.
Okay.
So...
So as long as it's just twice a year that they're coming in and you're collecting?
No, people can sign up anytime.
Okay.
It's just when the cards are shut off, you know? So if you sign up only for a month, then we need to make sure that that card gets...
You're going to have to go shut them off every month unless they come in every month, and that's...
That's too much. I think quarterly.
So you want to give them the option of paying either for the year, which is $240, or four times a year. So they could do, what, three months at a time? So those that decide to do it three months at a time, they'll be prorated like everybody else.
Yep.
So, and I'm not trying to make this difficult, I just want to make sure that I understand. So are we doing July, August, September, October? That's the first quarter?
Well, you said three months at a time.
Three months, right.
July, August, September.
July, August, September. So if they come in in August, they can't do three months from August. They're going to do that first quarter when we're in.
They do... Under today's rules, they'd do August and Sep... Well, they'd pay for August. If they were doing one year, they'd pay August all the way through.
Right.
So this way, they would pay August, September.
Right. So not... They can't... They can't start three months at any time when they come in.
No, keep it... Yeah, keep things on the...
The expiration dates are always going to be the same month.
Yes, yes.
Those quarter months.
Yeah, I think that's easier for figuring and whatnot.
And for shutting cards off, you only have to do it four times a year.
Is that your direction?
It'd be mine. I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
And I'm good with this unless Brad wants to change it.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Just an update. Protection 1 will be here tomorrow. No getting into too much detail. We are having issues with a couple of sensors and for some reason, our notification in other parts of the building seems to have stopped. Essentially, when the alarm goes off in the cable room, it should sound in the rest of the building. It doesn't. And we had an instance last week where it was going off there. There was no one upstairs. There was only someone downstairs and it wasn't until sheriff showed up.
Was that Friday?
Um, it was on the call day.
Because I got a phone call.
So I... I get them all the time.
What happened with the call?
It was open. The place was open when they called.
So you called the truck on us to see why they're calling the door off?
I didn't get it until several hours later. I figured that... I figured the deputy had been here by then.
You got a call too? You made a call to the sheriff?
Yeah, I got them several calls over six months.
Then maybe we need to rethink about how the calls are being handled because when they call, it matters. I need to know if there's a call.
If they... If they tell me there's a burglar alarm going off...
I thought we changed the contacts.
Well, I thought so too, but I'm... They're still calling me.
What is the... They called you just last week?
Yeah.
And what did they say?
That there was a burglar alarm on the second floor of the 35H Road or something.
And what did you say?
I said, "Call the police."
I'm going to plead the fifth.
All right. Transportation. Mr. Mann has asked me to inform you that he is going to be building some steps. He said that if I mentioned the E waste area, you would know. Guess they're close to people being... Close to falling through, similar to the area in my office that somebody's going to fall through on. He's going to pitch those steps. He's got an accountant who's worked out the treasurer. He's got the money in the budget. Just an FYI.
He's going to build them themselves?
I didn't have... I don't imagine. Personnel policy. The... The company said the personnel policy that you guys signed in June, although you weren't here, you didn't... You were part of that, has been sent out to all employees. You may get some calls, but even election workers, people that only work a couple of hours or, you know, maybe once a year, are considered employees, so they need to sign it. So including you guys, there was one in all of your boxes. So if you could sign those and give them back, we would appreciate it.
It's already done.
Yes, yours is. I wasn't going to pick them, you know, pick them all by name, Bill, but if you want to, Ted, yours is the only one I'm missing.
I put my name in the wrong place, though.
Yes, of course. Again, you admit more than I would. Okay. This is an email from the library. Jennifer, we've had several requests for a picnic table outside for patients to use. Is this something that we can put on the glass post... The grass closest to the gym? Is the board okay with that? If so, I'd like to put the word out and see if the library can get one donated to us, preferably one that holds an umbrella. So she's looking for permission from you to put the picnic table out there and she will advertise and go accordingly for her free table.
Fine with me.
What's she... Is this for book sales?
No, she would...
People that want to read.
People would just like to sit outside.
Oh, to sit outside and read?
I don't have a problem with it.
War and Finance. You all saw an email from Mr. William Williams that asked about who was on the War and Finance Committee and when he could get a list of all of the people that were on it. He's looking to, you know, possibly reconvene the committee. Today is the 17th, so from June 13th...
16th.
16th. I haven't replied, or I replied and told him that I couldn't get back to him yet because people aren't taking their oaths. And I'm looking to you for the next step if you want to spend... Spend money on a constable. All of these people have received letters from my office telling them that they need to be sworn in. There has been instances in the past where someone is elected on town floor and then decides not to. So until they're sworn in, they can't take their oath. Kevin Perks, Vicki Erickson, Pat Stevens, Carl Davis, Robert Anderson, Mark Hurd, Wesley Ham, Robert Gore.
These are people that haven't?
Those are all of the outstanding oaths from town meeting in the election that week.
And Tom Gore is on the War and Finance, being sworn in in the War and Finance?
Yeah, they're all sworn in for a variety of things. I didn't bother reading what they were being sworn into.
Because Tom's the chair, so if Tom gets sworn in, then he can call... Tell William that...
But what I'm saying is that we've already sent out letters to everybody. What is the next step that you want? I don't have time to chase them down.
No, don't chase them down. Just tell William that Tom Gore is the chair and has to be sworn in, and then he can call the meeting, and then they can elect a new chair for the new fiscal year.
So what was it like to do on all the other ones? I mean, we have a variety of...
Well, no, I'm just answering his question about convening that committee.
Oh, he's not the only War and Finance one that's not sworn in.
Right, but he's the chair. In order to... For them to convene another meeting, which they're going to have to do because we're going to do a special town meeting, then he has to call that meeting so that they can swear in a new... Or they can vote for a new chair for this fiscal year. So just let them know that we're waiting for Tom to get sworn in, and then he'll call a meeting.
Do we have email addresses for all of those? Is it appropriate to... No?
I'd say probably not.
Okay.
I personally don't.
We send one final letter to them? Is that...
And then what?
Give them a... Give them a... Yeah, it's true.
If someone's elected, you can't, you know, I mean, these aren't appointments about this board.
Right.
These are elections, so your only other option is to pay your constable to go knock on their door, which hopefully can avoid maybe mentioning their name once to help. If it doesn't, any of those people.
If... If they're not responding, when you send a constable, does this cost us money every time?
Yes, yes.
Or just during the day? In other words, can you get three or four or five of these things?
Well, similar to how he posts warrants, it would be, you know, it's a mileage based on how many postings. I know that Mr. Perks, I expect to be in... Expect him to be in tomorrow. Some of the other ones, I have him in scenes in some meetings. So if I share the names, maybe you might be able to assist.
I remember. I don't think we voted for anybody that wasn't on town floor this year. That was the first time that happened. Everybody seemed to have been there.
Well, they didn't say anything. They rose. Most people didn't say.
Got a lectures to call.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
My recommendation would be that the lies on selectmen, call these individuals. Tell them what the...
All right, thanks.
That way, you're not putting it all on one person and you can split it up and whichever committee you're responsible for, that's what I'd recommend.
All right, thanks.
Is that something I may email you?
Sounds good to me.
Phone numbers too.
Yep.
I think it's easier to just wait.
Whatever information you might have, send forward.
And what did you just say?
I think it's easier to just wait to have a letter and they know they've been elected. I mean, Kevin's on the school committee. He's going to have to...
Kevin, I expected, I expect Kevin to come in.
Yeah, so you should be coming in and...
You have a nine. You want to wait? You want to call the ones that are on yours? Maybe Bill?
That's why you want to do it, yeah.
I'll take the ones that are on mine, give them a call. Drug the memory. So hopefully between tonight and that, we can get it all done.
Well, you've already taken care of Kevin and what else do I have? Planning board and anybody on the planning board?
I don't know. They're all good.
No, actually, they've already been sworn in because they already had their election in the next one.
Yep.
Okay. Next is an email from the school. Email between the treasurer and the school. You guys saw this, but you need to... Michelle asked that I follow up. So it's from the treasurer. I spoke to Kim today in regards to the school's... School board's intention of giving the town more money to offset taxes. She said that it's now going to be discussed in detail at the school board meeting on the 22nd at 6:30. I would probably... It would probably be beneficial, at the very least, for the liaison to attend this meeting. From what I gather, there's talk of having to... Of having to appropriate money from the end-of-nationated fund for another teacher that they weren't counting on. So it's all talk right now and it's going to be discussed in detail on the 22nd. So this email kind of goes to, they're not sure. It sounds like they may not be sure what's going on, and they're going to make the decision that night, so...
I see Kim every day, so I'll take care of it.
Okay.
Yep.
So I need to do nothing with this? You're all set?
No, yeah, I'll take care of it.
The local road assistance, the LRAP, used to be known as the URIB.
Europe, Europe.
So they're extending a form that the municipality needs to fill out and needs to sign. It needs to be signed by two selectmen and they want it prior to August 5th... Uh, August 1st, excuse me. Something I would generally just put out in the new business, but there are some sections on the back that specifically want the road names and capitals and how much they sent... How much they spent. Michelle sent an email on Monday, June 29th. Please give me a report by the end of next week describing the projects that fall under the Europe money. Please include the length, material, location, and any starting point.
And that's to the road commissioners?
Correct. And she doesn't have any of that information, so I know that we didn't really set a road commissioner liaison, but how would you like it handled?
Well, I was, and I have no problem staying with it. What... The reason that we went into the... Taking the LRAP money and putting it into that fund for doing paving is they do one project every year so that we could keep track of that because before, they were using it all over the place and nobody was keeping track. So they each did one job this year.
Right, I mean, I don't think anybody's questioning it.
So, yeah, no, I mean, it would be very simple. It's just one job for each of them, so I'll let them know.
See if they got my email.
Hmm?
Maybe ask if they got the email, if there's a better method of communication.
Okay.
There's a ceiling tile in the bathroom. You chuckle because you've heard this before.
It's been there, yeah, right.
It needs to be replaced.
What happened with the claim? Did we get any money for that when the roof leaked?
No, it wasn't enough to make the deductible from the snow and ice.
Oh, okay.
The roofing company came back. They didn't charge us for that.
They fixed the roof.
They fixed the roof.
You can't buy one single tile. You're going to buy a box of the things and everything, and you're looking at $40 to $50.
Okay, so what is your...
I would just say...
You're going to go buy a box and fix it because we don't have a maintenance man?
All right. I will buy a box of tiles, but you have to furnish the maintenance man. I will buy a box of tiles, but you have to furnish the maintenance man.
I'll put him up.
All right. There you go, solid.
Okay, so from Michelle, so just a reminder that town meeting appropriated money for the mowing and maintenance of cemeteries where veterans buried. In the past, the board discussed, speaking with the committee or discussing with the committee or setting up a superintendent. We have the money now for mowing of these cemeteries and we also have two, four, five, six different cemetery accounts that the town is holders of that we're required to be maintaining these cemeteries. It's not happening. So we need some direction as to who you want to oversee it and, you know, who's gonna mow it.
Well, we had talked about Wesley Ham because he's done all the veterans, so if he's interested in...
He's on the conservation committee, correct?
Right, yep.
Maybe him and the conservation committee can take care of that.
Will you be compensating them?
Yes. Well, I mean, they'll figure out who's gonna mow it and whatnot and...
There was one cemetery, I think it had an account too. Actually, they came in to bring us money and they wanna do that cemetery. That's the one on H Road, on the left side of the H Road, so we can contact them and let them know. They've probably already been cutting it.
So what exactly am I asking the conservation? If they'll oversee this project, go up to bid for the person that's gonna mow it and all of that? I mean, that still would be a town bid, you know what I mean? So unless the conservation committee is going to just mow it and not be compensated, I mean, we've got a fair bid process. Somebody needs to consider going through. I believe, you believe?
How much do you think it would cost to mow the cemeteries?
I don't know where they all are.
No.
How big they are or how many, you know, what the details.
And the main maintenance of it is just around the veterans.
Yeah.
It'd be over...
If you're gonna do them just around the veteran, you might as well do the whole cemetery and it would kinda look kinda small.
How many are there?
I don't know how many town cemeteries there are.
Oh, I thought you mentioned with veterans.
No, I don't know.
Oh, you just have a list of the ones that have money.
I have a list of the cemetery funds that we're holders of that we're not doing them right. But as far as how many veterans may be the cemetery... Who's the liaison conservation?
That's Karen.
Probably me. I was before. I don't know if that changed or not.
And I guess maybe we need to revisit the liaison because we didn't set one for the road committees, the road commissioners, and I don't think we set one for conservation.
Probably not.
The conversation that we had and the memo that you guys all agreed to that I read to you before we mailed out was that if they were small ones like that or major ones, like the road, you wanted everything brought here so there wasn't going to be one contact person. So do we need to go back to the liaison so that I can better understand?
I'd say to start with, we could give the cemetery list to the conservation committee. Let them take a look at it and formulate a plan.
Tell them how much money they have.
Let's wait till they formulate the plan. And then we can tell them how much money.
So I'm gonna inquire if they're interested and ask them to come speak to you at your next meeting.
Yeah. Or at least there, chairman.
I'm not sure they have a meeting.
Okay.
Good news, I can see the bottom.
All right.
You can. I'm sure we'll be out there saying the same thing.
That's good, cause we're gonna need a break here in a minute.
Okay. I think the last thing... Oh, we need to set a special town meeting date, a seven-point. I mean, we need a date and a quick list of exactly what's gonna be on it. So we know we have the solid waste ordinance.
Right.
We know that we have the fire and rescue ordinance. You're looking at putting zoning questions on there. You want to get more money from the school.
Yep. Ken Paul. Or the CEOs.
CEO pay?
Yep, compensation, yep.
Okay.
Change the title and compensation.
I'm sorry?
Change the job, just change the title of the job in the compensation.
You're gonna ask the town people if they wanna change the job or you're doing that under your own's?
Well, that's how we presented it, as this is the position and this is what we're asking if it's okay to pay him at this.
So the...
Don't list it as code enforcement listed with a new title.
Okay, so, but the warrant article is just...
Just about the money.
Well, it's just gonna, to see if the town will raise and appropriate $2,700 for the purpose of, that's all it's gonna say.
Yeah.
It'll be up to you if you wanna... Okay, when do you want the special town meeting?
Well, we gotta commit taxes on the 20th, so we need to do it before we commit taxes so we know what we're getting from the school. How much time do you need?
Yeah, where do we sit as far as...
I need?
No, I mean, does the law require?
What does the law need?
How much time does the law require?
Did we figure we had to have a public hearing?
We don't have an answer to that.
Okay. So it kinda hinges upon that.
We'll have to make the final decision. I'll try to create a schedule and present something to next week.
Can we set it for a week before we commit taxes? Though, when is that in fare too?
As a fare is after we're admitting taxes.
Okay. Go for the Thursday before? I mean, what night are we gonna have it? Are we gonna have it? I guess we don't even know whether to do a night or Saturday or what, do we?
It's not gonna be on Saturday, is it?
No, not during the summer.
I'm counting backwards from Thursday, August 13th, if we could make that happen. But again, I'm gonna find out as far as the, some of the public hearing requirements. And the school, you said you talked to Kim every day, but what, the school meeting is this month, is the 22nd? Do you have an idea?
Yeah, I'll find out from her Monday exactly what's going on and then I'll go to the meeting Tuesday night.
I just don't wanna spend the time to track these warrant articles and... So we'll tend to believe it's the 13th. So the last item is regarding the office and the office assistant and the staff and where we're at. So the fiscal year ended, the pay agreement that was prior in place is expired. Currently, we have myself, we have the treasurer, we have one office assistant, we have some temporary helpers. We've talked about keeping names out of it. The two temporary helpers that we have, one's gonna be gone at the end of summer and one that we're borrowing from downstairs. It's only Monday and Thursday, kinda just keeping us above water. So we knew going into, going into budget season that we were gonna be hiring another office assistant. So at the, at the end of the day, if all goes well, we'll have Michelle and I and then we'll have two assistants. And those assistants will be assistants to everything. And the goal is to have them cross-trained so that they can cover Michelle's office, they can cover mine, and somebody in that place can pick up some secretarial work that we have here. So one of them will work for the selectmen as well, so...
And this is because Lorraine's severance package is all done after, so we're using the money that we used to pay for Lorraine to hire this new person.
Right, the budget did not go up.
Right.
But we were, you know, many people have asked over and over, "Why hasn't she been replaced? Why hasn't she been replaced?" And that's not something that we've gotten into. But now we're ready and we've got some breathing room to try to bring someone in. We did budget for the health insurance and some other things, so it'll be probably thirty hours. So the current office assistant and the other office assistant will both get thirty hours and then hopefully that will alleviate some of the stuff. I just wanted to tell you too that some of the projects that Brenda is working on downstairs in her extra hours are job descriptions and still working on all those D problems that we had, rebuilding some of those books and a lot of online work, so... We are making progress as a group.
Okay.
When's your guess for the special town meeting?
August 13th.
August 13th.
The meeting is recorded, so certainly I can take minutes from afar. Is there anything in your agenda that you would require my presence for?
Uh, you've got all the paperwork that we have to sign and everything?
I've got two, so I'll go for the first couple of you.
Okay.
Which is the Vacation Land Volkswagen.
Okay. Okay, a motion on the Vacation Land Volkswagen mass gathering permit.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Vacation Land Volkswagen Association's permit.
Second.
Okay, a little discussion...
It's held out to fair grounds?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got your liability. We got the appointment. Talked to the sheriff's department?
Not yet. I asked Chief Smith if I could meet with him right after.
All in favor?
Thank you, sir.
All right, welcome.
Okay. Could I get that mail? We're gonna be out of state for the next week. Thank you very much. Appreciate you, folks, man.
Thank you.
No problem, that's not a problem. I'm gonna be stuck in the security business too, no.
Payback.
Thank you very much, folks.
Okay, Mr. Penny.
Mr. Penny, come on up. So we were waiting last week for his worker's comp.
Hey, you rushed it in for me?
Give that back to Jim.
An outpatient fee, we have a permanent fee, we have the insurance. We have the list of that. Worker's comp?
Yep. Says he doesn't need it.
A motion to accept this, right?
Can I just look at it for a second? And then you're gonna put that, the application you need to make a motion on?
What was the application? Okay, I move that we...
Wait, wait, wait. Let her tick, make sure it's right.
I do. I move that we accept the application of Travis Penny as a commercial hauler permit, I guess.
Seconded. All in favor?
I think that's it.
So I will post a check the first thing in the morning, send your, mail your receipts, and Bob will get a copy of this first thing tomorrow as well.
All right. Thank you.
I don't know if you're planning on, if you need to dump there tomorrow, he can always call me if he doesn't come up here and get the copy. I'm in the business box, just have him call me there if I want.
All right.
And this is annual, so you'll have to do this again next year, but you've got your notice from the state saying that you don't need workman's comp, but you'll have to have updated insurance and everything next year.
Yep. So the workman's comp, I won't need again.
Well, you wanna make sure you keep a copy of that letter and submit it.
That's the only copy I have.
I think that was dated.
Okay. So you submit it every year?
Okay.
Cause that's part of the package. Your insurance, the letter says that you don't need workman's comp and then the fees, okay?
Yep.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next one, the permit fees or to vote to not charge the full permit?
Permit fees was next.
Okay. Okay, this is the thing that Kenny brought to us.
I'm sorry. Can you just, for Mr. Penny, can you, I need you to actually sign this. Hold on, I'm just making it public while you're here. The transportation's not open tomorrow, that's my mistake, so you'll have it Saturday because we won't, probably won't see them. If you just take that into my office, ask my assistant to make you a copy.
I think the only difference was the other one had a yellowed copy.
A non-refundable, the change in the permit fees are a non-refundable fee of 25% of the estimated total fees is due and payable at the time of the application. Motion on the permit fees.
I move that we accept the permanent fees.
Seconded. All in favor?
So the next one was to waive the fees for the fire?
Okay.
Is that what you had?
Yep.
You have a document over there? I didn't...
I don't think he left us anything, right? He wanted us to charge half the fees. I don't see a document on, he kept the application with him, so...
So let's make a motion to follow his recommendation and not put a number in it and I'll verify and get you something to sign.
Sounds good to me. I so moved.
I can't make the motion, that's just...
He so moved it.
I'll make a motion that we take the recommendation of the CEO to waive up to 50% of the permit fees.
Oh, that's a motion?
Yeah.
All in favor? Okay, Chip as liaison, right?
Yep.
That was Sanborn Road, correct? The fire? Just add that little bit in there, just so we...
Okay, a motion on Chip as liaison to the planning board?